Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on June 9th beginning at 7:02. I want to thank everyone for coming out to be with us this evening. We'd liked our start of meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. Kristen Hudson in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. Now, if you would please silence your cellphones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. We'd appreciate that. And join me in a moment of silence. Again, thank you for being with us this evening. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a program to introduce some very special students of ours, the Student Leadership Advisory Team for the 2015-2016 school year. Ms. Grace Sprinkles, our president, could you come forth and introduce yourself? Could you all come forth, please? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Ms. Sprinkle, could you help introduce each student, let us know which board member they're paired with, what school, and so that we will be in an idea of what the Student Leadership Advisory Board is for the audience this evening?
Okay, well, I'm Grace Sprinkle. I'm from Arlington High School, and my board partner is Jamie Solins. And this is Jaclyn, and her board member is Polly Walton.
I've just all come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, let us know what school you're from. That'd be great.
Hi, everybody. My name is Elizabeth Hong, and I go to Wantzakeen High School. My board member partner is Keisha Mays, the Assistant Secretary.
Hello, everybody. I'm Atlantis Russell. I go to James Bowie High School, and my board meeting partner is Dr. Erin Reich.
Very nice. Got it.
Hi, my name's Brooks Snapton. I'm the junior class president at Martin High School, and my partner board member is Mr. Bowie-Hogg.
(inaudible)
There you go. There you go.
Hello, I'm Jaclyn Garcia. I go to Lamar High School, and I am the junior class council, and my board partner is Polly Walton.
Very nice. We're certainly glad that you came out this evening, especially since school is out, and here you are, coming back to school to start planning for next year. The Student Leadership Advisory Board works with the board members one-on-one to help advise on policy, get student input, so that we have a better connection of what the policies and the work that we do relate to the classroom from a student perspective. Thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you for your work, and we look forward to seeing you next year. Have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Now, next up on our agenda is something very special, is a recognition of President Bowie-Hogg. I want to take a few moments to thank Bowie for your exceptional leadership to the board. Bowie served as board president for two highly productive years. During his tenure as board president, the strategic plan implementation was in its infancy. The district passed the bond package addressing long-awaited district capital improvements and creating multiple new pathways for student learning. Bowie's pragmatic problem-solving served this district well during his term as president. As is our custom, we present a gavel as a token of our appreciation for his service and many, many hours. We look forward to working with you, of course, for many years to come. Bowie, is there anything you'd like to say?
Ms. Solins, thank you so much. I've always said I serve at the will of the board, and it's wonderful. This is a great team. It's a great team to lead the last two years, and I couldn't be more proud to pass it on to you and allow you to accept the presidency phone calls. They come all the time. So, Ms. Solins, it's wonderful over here. I like looking at it from this perspective right now, so...
Big shoes to fill.
Thank you so much. It was an honor to serve this board the last two years as president, and I look forward to serving this board, continuing on as trustee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Could you join Dr. Cavassos down below? We have a plaque to... What? (inaudible) Spence's just probably right around the corner. It's good to see you all.
Good picture. Good picture here. He's running.
He's running. Yay! (laughing) Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doctor Raj, I'm sorry, there is no outgoing secretary gift. Maybe next time, so... Is my mic? Okay. Very good. Okay, next on our agenda is appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solins, and at this time, I'd like to recommend the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for assistant principal for Williams Elementary.
Move for approval.
I second that.
A motion from Mr. Hogg and a second from Ms. Hudson. Is there any discussion? Please vote. It's not starting working yet.
I... Jamie, I think it's popping up over there.
Okay. It should be working now. There you go.
They're getting nervous we can't make it official.
Don't worry. Don't worry. It's just a small technology glitch. There we go. All trustees voting.
The voting didn't work, so...
We like to keep it suspenseful. All trustees voting. All trustees voting affirmative. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solins, and I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal for Williams Elementary, Ms. Dawn Strojewski. I hope I got that right. All right, Dawn. Dawn received her Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, attended the University of Texas at Arlington for her Master of Education in Leadership, most recently the instructional coach at Short Elementary, has taught fourth grade at Anderson, and has been a third and fourth grade teacher in Fort Worth as well. Dawn, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you so much. I want to thank President Solins, the members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos for the opportunity to become an assistant principal at Williams Elementary. I would also like to thank Dr. Buell, Mr. Kamla, and the interview committee for still believing in me after my very long-winded answers. I'm blessed to be accompanied this evening by my husband, who I should not have looked at, (laughing) and my children, Madison and Maddox. There's a lot of people betting if I'm going to cry, and I'm really trying to let them win. And my mother-in-law and father-in-law, Marty and Joanne Stroyewski, and my aunt and uncle. It is okay. I don't want to cry, though. Like, I worked hard on my makeup and everything. I also have many friends who are members of my family with me tonight, and some are watching online. Without them, I wouldn't be here. I want to thank my parents back home in Buffalo, watching online, and my sisters. Someone else is crying. I heard it. But I'll see you guys in July. I'm coming home soon. I also want to thank Tracy Cross, Kat McCollum, and Mark Strand for being wonderful mentors and helping me become the instructional leader that I am. I also owe a large thank you to my Emerging Leaders Cohort. Being in that program, I learned so much as an instructional leader, and being in that room, I was honored and humbled to be surrounded by such greatness. To my Short family, thank you. I'm taking you with me. And finally, to my Williams family and team, I'm excited to work with you. I can't wait. Thank you for accepting me to be part of your team. Before I accepted this position, I was asked to honor our students and be the best instructional leader I can be, and I intend to honor that request. I intend to... I am dedicated to ensuring our students succeed and reach their lifelong goals, and I will demonstrate this through my actions as an instructional leader in AISD at Williams Elementary. Thank you.
Congratulations on your appointment to the Arlington ISD. As is our custom, we ask that you join Mr. Cale and form a receiving line for each of us to meet you and welcome you. If the audience would please let the board go first so we can get back to cover the rest of the agenda, we would appreciate that, and take a break to participate. We'll return in 10 minutes at approximately 7:25. Thank you. (music) I call this meeting back into order. And next, we have no public hearings, so we'll move on. And Ms. Benjamin, can I confirm, do we have any open forum agenda items?
No cards for open forum agenda.
Okay, no cards for open forum agenda and no action items. That takes us straight to consent, Dr. Cavassos, so we will check. And first, with the trustees, are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda this evening? Okay, seeing no one removing or maybe removing from the consent agenda, Ms. Powell shared donation information earlier this evening on the PowerPoint in the lobby. We thank the community for their generosity and Ms. Powell for preparing all of that. And so, Dr. Cavassos?
If this is where you want to talk about the salvage, would you cover a little bit of our process, Ms. Powell, on salvage and on the demolition of Hutchison Junior High and how we're...
Right, we have on the consent agenda this evening an item to approve a partial guaranteed maximum price for related to the Career Tech Center construction. And this particular piece is the demolition package. And so, obviously, before we can move forward to construct the new Career Tech Center, we have to demolish Hutchison. And so, just to give a quick description as to how that will work, we have already begun removing furniture and instructional equipment from the building and moving it to workmen. So, we have, in addition to the furniture and equipment, also the materials, textbooks, materials that will be removed from the building, moved to workmen with the students. What I guess you could call nostalgic items, everything from trophies to photos to mosaics, will be moved either to workmen, or we will store them. And we'll store them indefinitely, and they may have... We may have occasion to use them in the future in another place, so we will take care of those items. Then structural equipment, things such as electrical panels, fire alarm panels, HVAC systems, even the fencing around the exterior of the building. Anything that could be of use to us, we will remove, and we will store for future use in other locations. The asbestos abatement has to take place first before we actually demolish the building. And so, that work will begin mid-June and will continue through late September. The demolition itself, then, will commence immediately after that and will continue through the end of December. So, once the site's cleared, then we will proceed with constructing the Career Tech Center. So, in the fall, late fall is when we will come forward, or actually, I think it's January, with the guaranteed maximum price for the construction portion of the contract. So, again, tonight, what we're looking at is the guaranteed maximum price for the demolition. In terms of salvaging items, you know, we do recognize, after we've moved all the items that we've just discussed, and we've removed structural equipment that can still be of value to us, there may still be a few items that have some value and may be able to be repurposed somewhere else. And so, we are making arrangements. They're not final yet, but we are developing plans for how we will accommodate those things. In terms of exterior, we have some landscaping there, and so we will make those items available to other schools, other AISD schools. And so, it might be school faculty, it could be a student council, it could be a dad's club, PTA, et cetera, that may want to remove some of those items to be replanted at another campus. And I want to be real clear that this is not, you know, to dig up and take to someone's personal yard. This would be for movement to another campus. We will develop a process and a schedule for that. We anticipate that we'll have individuals or organizations sign up with us to indicate their interest in removing some of these plants. The organizations themselves will do that moving. They will dig up whatever it is that they are taking, and then they'll be responsible for planting it at the new location. And again, state law prohibits us from making gifts of public funds, so this is not for individuals to come and remove items for personal benefit. But we will be announcing that schedule very shortly in that process for how groups can sign up to indicate their interest, and then when we will permit them to come and remove those items. In terms of the interior things, we will abate the asbestos first, then we will assess to see what may remain. There may be some limited numbers or types of items that could be available to be removed. Again, state law prohibits us from making gifts of public funds, so we will develop a process and a schedule for allowing groups or individuals to either remove those items to perhaps for use at another campus and perhaps even to purchase them. And so, if we're purchasing, if they're purchased, then it's not a gift of public fund, so we'll work through that schedule. But what we anticipate is a very limited window of time after asbestos abatement is finished and before the demo work begins that we could make these items available. Folks could come and remove them. Safety is absolutely key here. You know, we are already... We have a work site here. Once we complete asbestos work, there may be some portions of the building that we think are... We really aren't comfortable with people in for safety reasons, and so we would make those off-limits to folks, so to speak. So, that will be something that we'll consider as we move through this. And also, it's very key that we stay on schedule with this entire project, and so, once we get to this point, there will be a very small window available for removing these items. So, you know, we'll report back on what that plan actually is.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Are there board members with questions? Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Solins. Ms. Powell, all the items that have historical meaning, like was discussed before, the murals, the... I can't remember... I don't remember the term for what they're called, the mosaic.
Mosaics.
The mosaic that was used, some of the items that I know were going to be taken over. Have... Are those going to be removed? Have we gone through and tagged those to make sure? Because we all know the worst thing that could happen.
A lot of them had...
Worst thing that could happen is it's torn down, and then we're like, oh, missed that one, because you can't go back.
No, we... A lot of the stuff has already been boxed up and ready to go to either workmen, or we are removing it. So, yes, we're being very careful with those items, and we're working with the campus administration on that.
And did we... I know it may be an extra, but did we do anything with the Arlington Historical Society to make sure there wasn't any items of major historic value, like allow them a walkthrough to the building?
I'm going to ask Leslie Johnston. I think maybe she can answer that question better than I can.
What? No one can answer better than Ms. Powell. I'm just kidding. I'm kidding.
We've contacted the Fielder Museum to see if they would like to set up an exhibit related to Hutch, and so they're going to look at some of that information or the items that we have, so we'll make sure we take them around to look at everything, to see if they... Make sure that we're saving everything that needs to be saved.
Getting the sign off from the... I guess that's the Fielder Museum, the Arlington Historical Society together in one, getting sign off from them that most of those items... Understanding that we're not gifting, and we can keep those and loan them, and I think that's not a gift of public funds, then at that moment, if we still own them, but they're on loan to that organization. But getting the sign off, I think, is important for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Any further questions? Ms. Powell, thank you. There's been quite some interest in people calling and having some interest. They're very attached to a school that they attended or worked, and so I appreciate you taking time to, where we can, reclaim, recycle. Of course, in not all cases, we'll be able to do that because of asbestos or cost of removal, but thank you very much for setting up a process so that people who are interested will be able to reclaim and recycle the things that they would like to. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this time, there were no items withdrawn from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion from Dr. Raj and a second from Ms. Walton. Further discussion? Please vote. All trustees vote in affirmative, the consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. Now, next on our agenda this evening for discussion is the 2015-2016 proposed budget. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solins, and at this time, Cindy Powell will give a presentation of our proposed budget. We covered some budget items as a preliminary last time, and now we have a proposed. So, Ms. Powell?
President Solins, board members, Dr. Cavassos, we are going to continue our discussion this evening on the budget. Last week, last Thursday, we talked about a preliminary budget for the general fund only. Tonight, we'll continue that discussion, and we will also proceed on and look at budgets for the other funds for which we'll adopt official budgets. I remind everybody of our timeline. Again, last week, we talked about the preliminary budget on the general fund. We presented recommendations for additional staff positions to be added to the budget. We also discussed compensation. The board voted to approve a 3% raise, and so we have added that now into the budget that you'll see this evening. We also discussed FFC recommendations and demonstrated where we had incorporated those as appropriate into the preliminary budget. So, tonight, again, we'll continue that discussion. We'll move on to look at other funds, and we'll continue the discussion on recommended positions. And then, we will also, in a separate item, a discussion-action item, ask this board to take action on a proposed tax rate, and we'll talk about that more when we get to that particular item. On June 25th, we will hold a public hearing on the budget and the proposed tax rate. That night, the board can make any final adjustments you wish to the budget, and then we would ask you to take action on the budget at that point. We have to, by law, adopt the budget by June 30th, and then we will receive our certified property values July 25th and actually adopt a tax rate in August. This slide summarizes the expenditure budgets for each of the funds we'll discuss this evening. The general operating fund, obviously, is the largest of these. We'll go through and discuss each one individually. The total of the expenditure budgets for all of these funds is $1,508,425. To revisit on the general fund, this slide shows us what has changed since the last presentation. The column here in the middle that is proposed budget, that's what we're bringing to you tonight. The column here on the left is the budget as we looked at it last Thursday. The only thing that has changed since you saw it on Thursday is we added in that 3% raise. It added about $9.9 million into the budget, and so with that, we now are showing an operating surplus of $4.5 million. There we go. Let Mr. Higgs get... There we go. Remind everyone that the green... The row highlighted in green is our operating surplus, and that is what we're going to focus on tonight as we move forward with our discussion on new positions. Below the line, what we have is our cost to construct the new elementary school in East Arlington, Patrick Elementary. And as we discussed at our last meeting, the board committed funds to build that elementary school several years ago. We began construction over a year ago, spent the bulk of the dollars to construct that building during the 1415 year, and so we have about $4.7 million of expenditures left to be completed before school starts in August. And so, that's what you see there in the line just below the green bar. That is coming out of surplus fund balance. It's not considered an operating expense. So, if we were to adopt the budget as it exists today, we would end up with a $185 million ending balance. This is a slide similar to the ones we looked at last week, where it actually compares the proposed budget in the orange highlighted column with last year's original budget. And again, looking, focusing on the operating surplus with the 3% raise in there, we now have a $4.5 million surplus that we're looking at on the proposed budget. And again, simply adding in the look at the cost to construct the new elementary school. So, additional considerations that we can discuss this evening are new position requests. We enumerated those at our last meeting. There were 82 positions outside of the campus staffing process that we are recommending. They include teachers. There were 17 teachers in the mix, including dyslexia teachers, teachers for the second cohort of students at the Arlington Collegiate Academy, the STEM Academy, Junior High School reading teachers. We had assistant principals for Jones Academy and for the Arlington Collegiate High School. We also had some operational positions included in here, including an operations manager, bus driver, security officer, some HVAC techs, and general maintenance positions. And then, we had several clerk positions, including ARD clerks to assist our diagnostician and help our diagnosticians be more efficient, and also STEM lab managers, two of them for new STEM labs at the elementary schools as part of our bond programming. The total cost of these positions, the base salary is $3.8 million with benefits $4.1 million total. And so, if that is added into the budget, it would subtract from that $4.5 million surplus that we were looking at a moment ago, and would leave us with a surplus of $420,000. And again, you see in here the cost to construct the new elementary school that's coming out of surplus fund balance, not current-year operating revenues, and so that would leave us with an ending fund balance if the budget were adopted as it sits right here. We would end the year, next year, next June, with a fund balance of $181.5 million. Now, moving on then to our other funds. The natural gas fund is a special revenue fund. It accounts for the revenues generated from leasing our mineral rights. The Board of Trustees has legally committed these funds. It's an accounting motion and commitment that is made, so those funds are committed for future special projects, and this budget can be amended as the others can at any time during the year for additional purposes that may be authorized by the board. The proposed budget here, we anticipate that we will end the 1415 year with a fund balance of $28.3 million, so that becomes our starting point for the new year. Our revenues, our royalty revenues are budgeted at $130,000 a month for a total of $1.6 million. Expenditures, we have some funds here for legal expenditures and consultant fees of $125,000, so that would give us a surplus of $1,000,500, and would bring the ending fund balance here to $29.8 million next June. The debt service fund, this is the fund that accounts for principal and interest payments on our bonded debt. We talked very briefly last week about an estimated tax rate, both the maintenance and operations tax rate, which funds the general fund, and the debt service tax rate, which helps us raise money to make our payments on...
Look at everything to see if it makes sure that we're saving everything that needs to be saved.
Getting the sign off from that, the, I guess that's the Fielder Museum, Arlington Historical Society together in one. Getting sign off from them that most of those items, understanding that we're not gifting and we can keep those and loan them. And I think that's not a gift of public funds then at that moment, if we still own them, but they're on loan to that organization. But getting a sign off, I think is important for that. Thank you.
Thank you, President Hawke. Any further questions? Ms. Powell, thank you. There's been quite some interest in people calling and having some interests. They're very attached to a school that they attended or worked. And so appreciate you taking time to where we can reclaim, recycle. Of course, in not all cases, we'll be able to do that because of asbestos or cost of removal. But thank you very much for setting up a process so that people who are interested will be able to reclaim and recycle the things that they would like to. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, there were no items withdrawn from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion from Dr. Raj and a second from Ms. Walton. Further discussion? Please vote. All trustees vote in affirmative. The consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. Now next on our agenda this evening for discussion is the 2015-2016 proposed budget. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Solins. And at this time Cindy Powell will give a presentation of our proposed budget. We covered some budget items as a preliminary last time and now we have a proposed. So Ms. Powell.
President Solins, board members, Dr. Kavasos. We are going to continue our discussion this evening on the budget. Last week, last Thursday, we talked about a preliminary budget for the general fund only. Tonight, we will continue that discussion and we will also proceed on and look at budgets for the other funds for which we'll adopt official budgets. Remind everybody of our timeline. Again, last week, we talked about the preliminary budget on the general fund. We presented recommendations for additional staff positions to be added to the budget. We also discussed compensation. The board voted to approve a 3% raise. And so we have added that now into the budget that you'll see this evening. We also discussed FFC recommendations and demonstrated where we had incorporated those as appropriate into the preliminary budget. So tonight, again, we'll continue that discussion. We'll move on to look at other funds. And we'll continue the discussion on recommended positions. And then we will also, in a separate item, a discussion action item, ask this board to take action on a proposed tax rate. And we'll talk about that more when we get to that particular item. On June 25th, we will hold a public hearing on the budget and the proposed tax rate. That night, the board can make any final adjustments you wish to the budget. And then we would ask you to take action on the budget at that point. We have to by law adopt the budget by June 30th. And then we will receive our certified property values July 25th and actually adopt a tax rate in August. This slide summarizes the expenditure budgets for each of the funds we'll discuss this evening. The general operating fund obviously is the largest of these. We'll go through and discuss each one individually. The total of the expenditure budgets for all of these funds is $1,508,425. To revisit on the general fund, this slide shows us what has changed since the last presentation. The column here in the middle that is proposed budget, that's what we're bringing to you tonight. The column here on the left is the budget as we looked at it last Thursday. The only thing that has changed since you saw it on Thursday is we added in that 3% raise. It added about $9.9 million into the budget. And so with that, we now are showing an operating surplus of $4.5 million. There we go. Mr. Higgs, there we go. Remind everyone that the green, the row highlighted in green is our operating surplus. And that is what we're going to focus on tonight as we move forward with our discussion on new positions. Below the line, what we have is our cost to construct the new elementary school in East Arlington, Patrick Elementary. And as we discussed at our last meeting, the board committed funds to build that elementary school several years ago. We began construction over a year ago, spent the bulk of the dollars to construct that building during the 1415 year. And so we have about $4.7 million of expenditures left to be completed before school starts in August. And so that's what you see there in the line just below the green bar. That is coming out of surplus fund balance. It's not considered an operating expense. So if we were to adopt the budget as it exists today, we would end up with a $185 million ending balance. This is a slide similar to the ones we looked at last week where it actually compares the proposed budget in the orange highlighted column with last year's original budget. And again, looking, focusing on the operating surplus with the 3% raise in there, we now have a $4.5 million surplus that we're looking at on the proposed budget. And again, simply adding in the look at the cost to construct the new elementary school. So additional considerations that we can discuss this evening are new position requests. We enumerated those at our last meeting. There were 82 positions outside of the campus staffing process that we are recommending. They include teachers. There were 17 teachers in the mix, including dyslexia teachers, teachers for the second cohort of students at the Arlington Collegiate Academy, the STEM Academy, junior high school reading teachers. We had assistant principals for the, for Jones Academy and for the Arlington Collegiate High School. We also had some operational positions included in here, including an operations manager, bus driver, security officer, some HVAC techs and general maintenance positions. And then we had several clerk positions, including ard clerks to assist our diagnostician and help our diagnosticians be more efficient. And also STEM lab managers, two of them for new STEM labs at the elementary schools was part of our bond programming. The total cost of these positions, the base salary is 3.8 million with benefits 4.1 million total. And so if that is added into the budget, it would subtract from that $4.5 million surplus that we were looking at a moment ago and would leave us with a surplus of $420,000. And again, you see in here the cost to construct the new elementary school that's coming out of surplus fund balance, not current year operating revenues. And so that would leave us with an ending fund balance if the budget were adopted as it sits right here. We would end the year, next year, next June with a fund balance of $181.5 million. Now moving on then to our other funds. The natural gas fund is a special revenue fund. It accounts for the revenues generated from leasing our mineral rights. The Board of Trustees has legally committed these funds. It's an accounting motion and commitment that is made. So those funds are committed for future special projects. And this budget can be amended as the others can at any time during the year for additional purposes that may be authorized by the board. The proposed budget here, we anticipate that we will end the 1415 year with a fund balance of $28.3 million. So that becomes our starting point for the new year. Our revenues, our royalty revenues are budgeted at $130,000 a month for a total of $1.6 million. Expenditures, we have some funds here for legal expenditures and consultant fees of $125,000. So that would give us a surplus of $1,500,000 and would bring the ending fund balance here to $29.8 million next June. The debt service fund, this is the fund that accounts for principal and interest payments on our bonded debt. We talked very briefly last week about an estimated tax rate, both the maintenance and operations tax rate, which funds the general fund, and the debt service tax rate, which helps us raise money to make our payments on our bonded debt. The rate that we are showing you this evening, the 3.375, is very slightly higher than what we looked at last Thursday. We worked extensively with our financial advisors on Friday in looking not only at the structure of our upcoming bond sale, which will occur later in June, but then also at frozen property values. And we felt like we needed to bump that rate up just a bit to make sure that we were levying a tax that would raise the appropriate amount of principal and interest or funds to repay our principal and interest payments that are due this week or this year. So this estimated tax rate is an increase of 6.689 cents over last year's rate. And again, that provides for the principal and interest payments that will be due in this upcoming year on our outstanding bonds and the bond sale that we will bring to you on June 25th. And it also reflects the fact that we no longer qualify as of this year for state facilities aid. The facilities assistance funding is a guaranteed yield program through the state. Last year, we received $1.5 million. That amount has been declining each year for several years. As our property values go up, we qualify for less and less of that funding. You finally, we have finally reached the point this year where with our property taxes, we can generate more than that guaranteed yield. So we no longer will qualify for any state funding this year. The tax rates again will be adopted in August after we get our certified values. So that budget looks like this. We anticipate generating a total of $82.5 million, the vast majority of that from property taxes. There's one series of bonds that we have where we get some federal assistance on that. And so there's like $584,000 factored in there for that subsidy. The 78.3 million in expenditures, these are the principal and interest payments that we anticipate will be due in this upcoming year. And that reflects our estimate on the bonds that we'll be selling at the end of this month. That would bring a surplus of $4.2 million. And what I need to explain about that is that that $4.2 million that will exist at the end of June of 2016 is money that we need to make our payments in August and September of next year. The tax year is slightly different than our fiscal year. So the tax that is levied this year will cover the debt service payments that we will make between October 1 and September 30. And so when we get to the end of our fiscal year at June 30th, we still have two debt service payments to make, one in August and one in September. And so the $4.2 million surplus that you see here will cover those payments with what we also have in fund balance. Tax relief is something that we need to discuss. Through our legislative updates that we've had in the last few months, we've touched on this several times. The legislature was very intent on providing property tax relief this session. And they passed Senate Bill 1 that, among other things, granted a $10,000 increase in the homestead exemption. And with a higher homestead exemption, that lowers the taxable value for individual homeowners. And so it has the effect of reducing their tax burden. A constitutional amendment has to be approved by voters though before this is finalized. And so this has become rather tricky and it's been a little confusing and still is confusing, I think even to some of the folks that we've talked to at the state level, even as recently as this morning. That constitutional amendment will be before voters in November on the general election date. And so our, we will all adopt tax rates and the tax assessors will send out tax notices for this year before we ever reach that date. If the amendment passes, then the state will increase our state aid and replace the dollars that we lose from our tax levy because the homestead exemption is higher. On the debt service side, there's a very important point to note here. And that is that as far as that whole harmless payment goes from the state, the state will hold us all, all the districts harmless for debt that exists as of this upcoming September. So our bond sale that we'll be bringing to you all in a couple of weeks will be eligible for that. It's also, it's very, very important to note that that higher homestead exemption does not change our bottom line. Doesn't change our revenue total at all. It simply changes where the money comes from. For the impact, the taxes that we lose to the higher homestead exemption, the state will make that up. And so it simply shifts money from the current year property tax account to the state aid account. If that constitutional amendment election passes in November, after that, then TEA and the State Comptroller's Office will make the adjustments that they need to make inside the state funding formulas and to actually last year's property values that are part of those formulas to implement the effect of that higher homestead exemption. And then we would come to the board, it was part of our mid-year budget amendment, and we'll reduce current year taxes and increase state aid by an equal amount to reflect this change. What we have been told is that everyone needs to go forward and adopt their budgets using the state aid templates we have now and using the tax rate notices that we have available to us and the formulas for making those notices. And nothing on that, in those terms will change this particular summer. Tax assessors, this is kind of an interesting thing, since that constitutional amendment election is not until November, tax assessors have to send out tax bills October 1. And so they are being instructed from the state to issue the tax bills assuming that the amendment takes effect, assuming that it passes by the voters. And there will be some language included with those tax statements that says, if that constitutional amendment election does not pass, then they will reissue tax bills and the tax bills will be higher. So I figure that's a pretty good way to get people out to vote for a constitutional amendment. We have estimated that the savings to the owner of a $100,000 home, looking at our total tax rate, will be about $142. We talked about this previously and the estimate we had given was based strictly on the general operating fund. So for someone who owns a $100,000 home, savings would be about $142,000. All right. So that will have an effect on both the general operating fund and the debt service fund throughout the year, just in terms of where revenue is reported. On the construction fund, this is where we account for the proceeds of our bonds. And we also have TIF rebates and local construction funds here in interest earnings on investments in this fund. The expenditure budget that we're about to see for this upcoming year will provide funding for the projects that we have scheduled for phases one and two of the bond program. And those include some very major construction projects that you see listed here. Multipurpose activity centers, the Career Tech Center, two new elementary schools, Workman Junior High School Classroom Edition, renovations for two elementary schools, changing them from traditional schools into dual-language fine arts academies, and then condition improvements for 43 campuses. So in addition to the construction, we also have funding here for technology, fine arts and transportation. In terms of technology, the big things that we'll work on this year will include wireless enhancements and internet access expansion, implementation of additional security cameras, network equipment replacements, the virtual desktop implementation, mobile devices for our schools, transformational learning grants, and then the classroom standards that we're implementing across the district. Fine arts, we'll have funding here for instruments and uniforms in the tune, to the tune of $1.8 million. Transportation, we will purchase 23 buses and 35 white fleet vehicles. And on terms of the buses, 19 of those will be regular ed and four of those are special ed buses. We'll have a mixture propane and diesel buses purchased here. As we've discussed before, we are migrating to propane to the extent possible. We do have to keep a fleet of diesel buses for trips outside of Arlington. So the construction fund budget will look like this. And again, we're looking at this column that's highlighted in orange. I want to point out that this line right here shows $162 million deficit. Well, that's not a true deficit. We sold bonds last summer to begin a lot of this work. And so that, the funds that were not spent from that bond sale go into fund balance. And so we are drawing money out of that fund balance along with making expenditures on the upcoming bond sale to complete these projects. On the food service fund, we've talked every year about the fact that the food service fund operates like a business. So we treat it as an enterprise fund under governmental accounting rules. This fund has to stand on its own and does not receive any local tax dollars to help support the program. So this particular year, prices for full-priced lunches will increase again by 10 cents. This is several years in a row that we've had to make this increase. And it's to comply with a federal law, the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. That particular law requires that our paid lunches be at a level that we are at least equal to the federal subsidy that we get on free lunches. And so each year until you reach that point, you have to continue raising your paid lunch price. At the same time, the federal government is adjusting those federal reimbursement rates up. And so it's, it will be many years before we catch up with that. That rate increase does not impact reduced-priced lunches. They will remain at 40 cents. There's no change in breakfast prices this year. So the proposed budget that we're about to look at here includes the 3% raise that the board approved on Thursday night for food service workers as well as everyone else. This slide shows very simply our participation this year. We serve right at 10.5 million meals. One thing that's significant to note about that is we had three waiver days for weather this year. And so there were three less days that we served meals and yet we are very flat. We're serving about exactly what we served last year almost. In terms of what that budget actually looks like, you can see again in the orange, that particular budget. And so as, as we look at this here, we have a surplus of $302,334 as the budget sits right now. And that would give them an ending equity position of $23.8 million. So this fund is very healthy. We are recommending several additional positions be approved for this fund, four to be exact. We need an assistant manager at Seguin. That's the only high school that currently does not have an assistant manager. And participation has grown to the point that, that we need to add one there. And then also three food service specialists. With the consolidation of Hutch to Workman, most of those specialists will move to Workman from Hutch. We are repurposing a manager position from Hutch to our new Patrick Elementary. And we had several places where we were able to reduce a unit and a campus and move that position to Patrick. So for the most part, we've covered Patrick with, with positions that we've repurposed from other campuses. One of these new specialists would be for Patrick. We also have two specialists here for the Arlington Collegiate High School. As they add students and their participation grows, we're needing a couple of food service specialists there. So the, the total cost, including benefits for these four positions would be $92,164. If you add that into the budget, then they would end the year with a surplus of $200,000. And so that, very healthy again with that ending fund balance of $23.7 million. Well, that's a look at all of our funds. And then once again, you know, we'll, we'll have discussion on these funds this evening. We will bring this back to the board one final time, June 25th. And if the board gives us direction this evening on new positions, we can go ahead and build those into the budget for the next time we bring them to you all. And then the board can vote on, on that budget on the 25th. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. See, we have board members with questions? Mr. Higgs?
A couple of quick questions. So one, we need to approve the tax rate tonight?
That will be a separate item. Yes, yes.
Second thing, the TIF under the construction fund?
Yes.
The TIF that's closing out, the Grand Prairie, is it the Grand Prairie TIF? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that going into the construction fund?
No. We've got two different rebates here that we're dealing with. Inside of the TIF agreement, there's a portion of our contribution each year that has come back to the district. And that goes into the local construction fund. There's 8.1, 8.2 million dollars there of accumulated rebates from that, those rebates. The rebate or the reimbursement that we're looking at over in the general operating fund is simply the ending balance in the TIF. It represents our annual contributions into the TIF. And so that's outside of that contractual rebate that, that was designated into the construction fund. I should go back and explain that with our agreement on the TIF, it was that this money would be accumulated in local construction funds and that over the life of the TIF, we could only use it to build something inside of that TIF. And so that is separate and apart from this operating refund, if you will, the, the balance funds left in the TIF that will come back to the general operating fund that we talked about last week.
Okay. Okay. And that's being reflected now, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I just want to make sure of. So. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgs. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Solins. I just have one quick question. Food service funding, that group does such a fabulous job. And they reach out so beautifully to all of our students. They're just interfacing with them on a daily basis and they're, they're doing a great job. And I'm glad we could be sure that they got that 3% raise also. Just one quick question. The cost of the student and adult meal, could you give me the cost on that now? What that will be next year?
Yes. I've got the student meal here. I may have to ask Mrs. Anderson to help me on the adult meal. For students today, lunch prices at the elementary level are $2.35 and at the secondary level, $2.60. And so we're required to add 10 cents to those prices. So next year, the elementary price will be $2.45 and the secondary price would be $2.70. And the adult price? $3.35, all levels. Okay, elementary.
It's the new price?
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Solins. I have a couple of questions on food service since we were just talking about it. I was curious, do we have a projected 1415 like we do?
We do. It is actually in the packet, let me, the proposed budget packet we gave you. And you can see that beginning on page 58. So we are projecting that they will end this year with a surplus, if you will, of $2.7 million.
Okay. Let me write that down. Okay, so the expenses were lower or the revenues were higher?
And that is yes on both. Actually, I think, it is actually that expenses were lower.
Expenses were lower.
Revenue was actually just a bit lower than what we budgeted. And then the expenditures also were lower.
Okay. Okay. And so that just adds to the, the fund equity then?
It does. And, you know, one thing that's important to note about food service is they buy their equipment. And so they fund that equipment through that equity. And so they, with the other funds, under governmental accounting rules, we fully expense an item. You know, we keep talking about the elementary school, Patrick Elementary. And as we build that and spend those dollars, we expense it immediately. Food service fund runs like a business. And so they will use the cash out of their equity and purchase large kitchen equipment as they need it. And, but rather than recording an expense there, then they record depreciation like a, a business would.
Okay. And I'm curious, with the 3% raise, what, what budgetary impact does that have?
That was, we have added that in. Let me see if I...
Mr. Drolinger, can...
And the, the reason that I'm asking, I was just curious, from Ms. Anderson's point of view, since everything is run by a business, this is essentially a mandate that's given to you. And I was curious if, if, I mean, that's how it's been for a long time.
We're good.
You're good. Would it be, I, I figured you would be. Would there be any greater opportunity for increased autonomy on your behalf to work within your own budget to establish your own raise parameter?
And I guess I'll ask her to come to the, to the mic. You know, they work as a team with the schools. And so, and with the school staff and the principals. And so that's, we've always treated them the same as others. But I'll let Ms. Anderson.
I think that's, that's a great question. I think to Ms. Powell's point that we, and Ms. Walton's point, it's great to be treated equal and appreciated the same. And when we're all one team, when you start giving different groups, different amounts, it causes dissension. And we don't want to delay, you know, relay the, the main objective. We want to stay on task at being focused as our students. And so I think if we did something like that, it would cause more dissension than a positive personally. That's what I think.
Okay.
That's a good question.
And just on a, a larger scale, we've had similar conversations, not exclusively about food service, but about various employee groups over the years. And, you know, should we differentiate and what impact that has. So that, that's a conversation we have had before.
Okay. I have, it's still on food service. With the Seguin assistant manager position, you stated that the participation has increased. Is there a, a certain threshold that it got to? Is, is this a formula-based system, or how is that determined?
All their staffing is formula-based, and they look at meals served, and they talk about the hands that they need. A lot of times, when they talk about the specialist, not so much the manager and assistant manager, they've got to have a concentration of people for that, that period of time that they're prepping and serving. In terms of the assistant manager, do you want to address that threshold that...
Right. One of the things that we found beneficial is we look at participation, but we've also found that our high schools are so critical, and with so many different menu items and things, and so many different employees there, that it's, that we need to have some stationary person in case the manager's out that's really in charge besides just a lead. So that is the reason, besides participation levels, we've looked at all of those things. But, and Seguin has increased. We do have a new manager there that's doing an awesome job. But we think that we need the backup. And then we also use that backup to sub in that, in that cluster when another manager's out. So it's just a good backup system for our, our program.
So up until now, has it, has it been a struggle then, without it at Seguin?
Yes, actually. And, and so we've used floater positions, and we've used our supervisors, and it's not been as productive as we'd like it to be. So we think we have more stability. And, you know, we just feel like it's a better in our operational effectiveness to have that position.
Okay. Okay, great.
Dr. Rush, that the raise, the 3% raise is $305,102.
Okay. Okay. All right. I, I guess that'll be it for now. I do have questions on the, the positions that we were discussing, but I'll wait until we come back.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. Mr. Hibbs?
Ms. Hudson?
So looking at the itemized budget, you have payroll costs, supplies and materials, and then other operating costs. Could you just let me know, is supplies and materials all food? Or is that the trays?
No.
Or is that other operating costs?
Yes. It's all of it. It, that is where food costs are categorized. It's also where paper products and consumable supplies, the plastic utensils, that sort of thing, are categorized, along with just the basic office-type supplies that it takes to run not only the food service, main administrative office, but the individual kitchens.
Thank you.
I was going to come back around to the new positions. It's, that was the one component that I was missing a moment ago. This is a discussion item right now. So we can't vote on the new positions as we did last week. But we can go and at least give the district the direction to move towards that for the bond.
That's correct.
And I'd like to, you know, I know Dr. Rush has some questions on it. It would be a perfect time to be able to ask those questions. And then if we're of like mind from the board to suggest to the administration to go ahead and include that into the final budget for those 82 positions that they have listed.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Dr. Rush?
Okay. Well, I guess one of the things for me, with a total of 82 new positions, 36 and 46 respectively on professional and non, there, there are some ones that are, that are easily explainable and justified as far as our new schools. But I guess I want to go over them just a little bit more on justification, specifically how, how it was come to be that these are essential, how they tie into our, our needs with our strategic plan implementation. If it's been a, a felt deficit, and these are absolutely needed, I'm really looking more from a budget creep standpoint than anything. I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're in check there. And so I, I don't know if we want to go through all of these this evening and take this, that, that kind of time. And I'll just give one quick example with assistant principals, Jones Academy and, and the Arlington Collegiate High School. Do we not, or we already have an AP position, so is this a new?
We do. Let me, let me start even back up to your first question.
Oh, go ahead.
Just to make a couple of comments, just to set the tone and frame, I guess, and that's where you were going.
I think it's probably where we're headed.
But we, we do have a process by which positions are requested. And then we have a way that we set a prioritization based on different departments and different needs and, and the things we're trying to accomplish. And then we pare that down to first-level priorities, medium priority, lower-level priorities, and ultimately make decisions on the most critical needs that we have. Last year when we did this process, we also carried forward, did a very similar process last year. So we carried forward the things that we did not bring forward in terms of, but that we felt were somewhat priorities. Review those again to make sure that this is not just a one-year at a time, you know, look at new positions. You're actually carrying forward some history of, we needed it last year, and all of a sudden, you know, we're not even considering it this year. So that's a process that, that we've gone through, mostly senior staff, and then with me. But those are, that's kind of the process. I think it's important to know that there's, how we filter it in terms of those assistant principal positions in particular. If you want to address that, that's fine. But the early college does not have an assistant principal right now. Jones Academy has one, but it's a Rockmore assistant principal. And, and there's a need to have that specialty as well, just like we do at, at Corey, in terms of language or fine arts. But you can speak more.
But, and, and that was very similar to what I was going to say. And the senior staff, direct reports, superintendents and chiefs, spent significant amount of time looking through every requested new position and explaining how the position aligns with the work that we're doing or needing to do. The academic services priorities drove a lot of this in terms of the instructional and academic positions you see here.
Well, let me, let me ask then, rather than going through each, each one, because I, I don't want to waste our time here. I'm, and I, I trust that you, you know, with the priority, that you, you know what to do. I, just for clarification then, did we, in going through the priority and kind of looking at strategic plan, did we look at our, our STUDA results, our, our scorecards to align the, the deficits with how these are going to help alleviate those deficits? And that's, I mean, I just want to make sure that we have a, a fully vertically-aligned process, as we have already done with our strategic plan and transparency and that type of thing.
Sure, absolutely, Dr. Rush. And so I'll just speak in general terms, and then we can, any position we want to speak more in detail. But, so you notice behavior interventionist, and behavior is something disciplined and things that we've dealt with, including not only in special education, but general education, behavior issues that are, need to be addressed and intervene. Program analyst for our data, with our data warehouse and things like that, kind of tied to our plan. Reading is a, is an area where we are needing to make some improvements, specifically of students in the secondary level who are not on grade level to read. So you see some reading specialist dyslexia. Go back one, Cindy, just, yeah. So support interventionist as well, for the campuses that don't have an instructional coach and they're non-title, for example. Then we know that that's a need for them to have support and intervention and, and things like that. I'll go to the next one. Obviously, the maintenance, and you can go through those, and Cindy's done a, a good job of explaining that. Internal communications is something that is, is one of those persistent items in our survey results, in terms of communicating with the internal stakeholders, our employees in particular.
Absolutely.
Recognition, communication, understanding what we're trying to accomplish, getting feedback, focus groups and things like that. So that's directly from the results on that. And technology and related to bond and things like that are, are other examples. Special education with art and the relief, to some extent, of the paperwork on diagnostician so that they can provide more of a service to students. That's where you see art clerks. Special ed classroom TAs coming straight from some of the feedback and issues that we've had at certain schools with just supporting students that, that have special needs and things like that. So those are examples of that. You see bus drivers for, when we're implementing bond initiatives with transporting students so that everybody has access all over town. And so you see the rest on maintenance and operations. And security is one that came back in terms of our review, specifically at our secondary high schools. So that, those, that's how that all ties together.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. Thank you, Dr. Gavassos. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Solans. Ms. Powell, can we, do you also have a report of how many positions were, have been not included in this new budget? So we're adding, asking for 82. Were there any that were not renewed or retained over the last year?
In terms of where, did we have a net reduction out of staffing? We had a, was it...
So if you took our total, I mean, our estimated budget number, are we increasing that by 82, or what's our net?
The, if you look in the, let's see, find page 23 of the proposed budget packet, you will see that we are adding in the professional category a net of 45 positions. And that, this comes out of staffing. And then, and, and almost half of that was a result of the staffing ratio change approved by the board on sixth grade. That resulted in 21 teachers. The next page shows a net reduction of six paraprofessionals. And so that's a, a net gain of 35 positions through the staffing process. And that would be in addition to the 82 that, that we have here as additional recommended positions.
Yeah. Ms. Paul, Ms. Walton just leaned, whispered and said, I'm not sure I understand that. I go, Ms. Walton, I think I'd agree with you on that.
Well, in, through the staffing process with campuses, you know, we use staffing formulas.
Right.
The board also made a decision to change the staffing ratio on sixth grade. And so through all the staffing process that we did with campuses, and factoring into that, that higher staffing ratio, or, or smaller staffing ratio.
So we can't really calculate it from a net position?
Yeah. Then, then that resulted, well, I mean, we can, we can add those two together. There's 35 out of staffing, plus then the 82 would be a net of 117 additional positions.
So let me ask, did we eliminate any positions in this budget?
There are some eliminated. You can see them listed here largely through the consolidations of Hutch into Workman, and even Ferguson into Owlesley. There are also various places that we, this occurs every year as we go through staffing, where a school's enrollment has changed such that they may lose a teacher or two here or there, or a TA here and there. And so this is the net effect.
Okay, thank you. I'll review that more. Ms. Powell, let me ask a question on your slide where it talks about, go back one, to that first one. One more, please. There it is. So when we add six positions of teacher support interventionist, I think those are positions that are needed. My question is, it's ensuring one FTE per non-title one. We're already providing those, it sounds like, from that title on a title one status. So does that eliminate some of the funding for title one? Because you can't provide...
No, it does not. And we, title one funds instructional coaches, okay? Non-title one campuses have teacher support interventionist. It's, it's similar, but they do have different job responsibilities. They do provide that coaching element, though. And so we provided a half FTE at each of those non-title schools in the current year, 2014, 2015. We have two, I believe, of our MPE schools that requested through their autonomies, an additional half unit, so they would have a full-time person on their campus. And so this, these six positions would allow us to put a full-time teacher support interventionist at the other non-title campuses. So everybody has one full-time person instead of a half.
It's not interfering of...
No, it's, it's...
Allocating the same for title ones or some.
Right. It, it does not cause us to not be able to use title one funds as we had for those coaches. And this does not create any kind of a, doesn't set us up for any kind of a supplant issue.
Ms. Powell, didn't see anywhere in the budget of allocation of title one dollars and where those are allocated to?
Right. That is a, a federal fund. That's a grant fund. And so the grant funds are treated as special revenue funds. And as we get notice of grant awards from the Texas Education Agency, then those budgets are brought before the board. And so that happens. It, it spans a, a pretty good period of time, but we'll probably start receiving those in July. And so then we'll bring those individually to you all as we get those grant awards, those budgets.
And, and I agree with that. And I know we vote on them during the year. Is there any way we could see where that money was allocated in the 2014 year?
Sure.
2014, 15, because while it is federal dollars, those dollars can be funded for items within the district for our title one schools. And so it is our fiscal duty to oversee all funds within the district, not just some funds within the district. So I would like to request, I see Mr. Secretary writing it down, all allocation of how funds were used for title one dollars for 2014, 15 year, please.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Solans.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. And well said. Ms. Hudson?
My question was answered. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Ms. Solans. I, I just want to be assured that under the topic of inclusion education with special ed, this is a eater of, of funds, as, you know, it's, it's more expensive. Just... Just want to be sure that when we're doing this inclusion, that, you know, is necessary and the right thing to do. Are we staffing with TAs and the support people that we need to have to do it right?
We are. We actually had a review of our staffing this spring. And I think, I'm going to ask if maybe Dr. Wertz wants to touch on that. But yes, we have formulas for that. And that's something that since our current special ed director, Paula Long, has been here, she's spent a lot of time looking at staffing levels throughout the district and where we might need to make adjustments. And we have been making adjustments over the last couple of years, so.
If you could repeat your question one time, I was recording your request about title one while you were asking your questions, I apologize.
I just want assurances that as we move forward on inclusion, that we are adequately staffing with TAs or whatever else we need to have to make it work properly.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, we are in the process of finishing up or conducting an in-depth analysis of our staffing ratios when it comes to special education so that we can be sure that we implement it with fidelity and that the support is there for teachers when they're receiving those students in their classroom. And we're committed to making sure that process happens. We actually conducted a study using an outside group, Stetson. We shared that information with the school board, I want to say a couple, maybe six weeks ago. And we're waiting their final, the final report to come in so that we can look at their review. And right now preliminarily, it's indicating that we have appropriate staffing. What we're working on now is making sure that the structures around how the staff are being used at schools is actually going to be in place to facilitate that at the campus in an effective way. But we're, yeah, we're 100% committed to that.
Okay. So when will we have this study? Can you give me the timeline again? I didn't catch it.
It should be, we should be receiving it sometime, I would say, in the next couple of weeks. We haven't received a final copy yet. They've been working on it since, they began in February. And we're waiting on that final report to come from Stetson.
Dr. Cavassos would like to add as well.
No, go ahead. Okay, so the other thing that I think is important in this discussion is that in the spring, when we brought the staffing ratios that included special ed and number of TAs and all that, the board was very clear about making sure that the administration had discretion, even outside of that staffing ratio specifically for special ed and cases where we had situations where we said we, it was one TA per, for this class, that if we had a situation, that the administration had discretion to add more TAs or another teacher if we needed to. So that was something just to add to the context of the decisions we can make during the year outside of that staffing, so.
Yes, well, I am all for making those adjustments. And if we need to, you know, increase that, you know, at some point, I will be glad to look at that carefully.
Okay. We've been, we've been very intentional about doing a comprehensive look at the entire system when it comes to special education so that there is support in the classroom. We don't have any intention on placing students in a classroom where the support isn't going to be there for their success or for the teacher's ability to provide the instruction.
Exactly, exactly. We want, we want all of our students to be successful. And that means different things for different kids.
Absolutely agree, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Dr. Rush?
Hold on, Dr. Wertz. I just wanted to follow up on the special ed and the Stetson report. So you're saying that the final numbers will be coming within a couple of weeks. You have every bit of discretion. At this point, you said preliminarily, it seemed like we're appropriately staffed. And I think back at that meeting, that information was presented. We all, I don't know if we voiced it, or we had some concerns just to make sure that this is a new thing. We really, between the lag time of staff development, of what inclusion and how to do it, and the potential increase, to make sure that we are staffed appropriately. And I just want to be clear that you feel that we are at a comfortable level or the preliminary, I guess, information you're getting from them in advance of the final report is that we're okay. And I'm only asking specifically because I had a couple of folks that approached me with concern that, I guess, maybe there's potential rumor out there that there's going to be much less support. And I just want to make sure that we're covered and that we're not catching ourselves with maybe a large budget amendment that we'd have to do in the fall.
We don't have any anticipation of that right now. The initial report that we've received, we haven't been through the entire thing yet because it's quite lengthy and we haven't, it's not finalized yet. They're still working out details. It looks right now preliminary that we have the right staffing ratios when it comes to teacher and paraprofessionals. Of course, when we look at the final document and we compare our programming across the district, if we have to come up with some adjustments, we'll bring those to you. But we don't anticipate any large changes. Right now, it's much more about how to structure the support that's already in place on campuses in a way that's more meaningful for students and to design instructional master scheduling at the, specifically at the elementary level that helps facilitate that in a more meaningful way so that teachers have the support coming to their classrooms when those children are in their rooms and when they're needing intervention. So right now preliminarily, we don't see that as a significant change.
Okay. And just with everything else, appropriate communications.
Absolutely.
To make sure everybody's clear and understands that they're going to be okay.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Walton, and then I'll wrap it up.
One more quick question. How many students, elementary and high school? And you don't have to tell me right now, but if you could get me some numbers on how many children are in special ed in elementary and how many are in special ed in high schools?
We happen, Paula might have the answer. Do you have the number? Do you know exactly how many we have?
I don't have the breakdown. I can put it on my computer, but in total, it's about 5,300 students in total that we serve. So I can do the breakdown a little bit.
So we have approximately 5,300 students that we serve in the district. And we'll provide a breakdown of which programs they're in and specifically which grade levels.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Thank you, board members, for your comments and questions and requests as we move forward into this budget season. I have one more request. In that in past years, Ms. Powell, toward the end of the budget season, you provide a chart that we call the five-year chart. I don't know why, but we do. And I would like to also have a look at that before.
That is something we'll bring next time, yeah. We needed to get to a point where we knew what was in here and then we can forecast it forward.
Completely understand. So understand that the board is giving direction to add the 83 positions. And then we have some questions about, Mr. Hogg had some additions in, 82, 82. Yeah, okay, all right, all right.
And Ms. Solans, just a point of clarification, those, we're adding those 82 positions to build them into the budget. They are not being finalized, they're not being approved until we officially vote on the budget.
It's for further study, exactly. Exactly, Mr. Hogg. Okay, very good.
Kids have got to materialize. The kids have got to materialize that first day, yeah.
Yes, and we'll bring that, you'll bring back that on the next budget discussion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you, board members. Any more lights or questions on this topic? So we will move on to our discussion action item, considered proposed tax rate for the 2015, 2016 fiscal year. This is a discussion action item. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solans. And Cindy will talk about our proposed tax rate and the information that needs to be included in that. Ms. Powell?
President Solans, board members, Dr. Cavassos. The education code, Texas education code, requires that school districts hold a public hearing on the budget and the proposed tax rate each year. And you have to hold that hearing before you adopt the budget. We have to publish that notice in the newspaper and on our website 10 to 30 days before the hearing. And we include in that notice a proposed maintenance and operations tax and debt service tax rate. By law, the board cannot adopt a rate higher than what we publish. We can certainly adopt a lesser rate, and that happened last year. We adopted a lesser rate than what we originally published. But if, when we get our certified values in July, circumstances are different than we have forecasted and all of a sudden we need to levy a higher debt service rate in order to cover our principal and interest payments, then we would need to publish a different notice, a new notice again, and have another public hearing before the board actually adopts that rate. But before the board can even adopt the budget on June 25th, we have to have this hearing. So the timeline for this process would be that tonight, the board would vote on the proposed tax rate that we publish in this notice. And then we will publish that notice in the Star Telegram and post it on our website. And then we'll hold the hearing on June 25th. Again, as we've said before, the budget has to be adopted by June 30th. And the tax rate itself will actually be adopted in August after we get those certified values. So the rates that we have estimated that we need in order to operate, it was $1.4 on the maintenance and operations side, and that's the same rate we have in place today. And as we have said before, we cannot levy a rate any higher than that without having a tax ratification election. On the debt service side, we discussed that a minute ago. We have to levy the tax rate that generates the dollars we need to repay principal and interest due just in the upcoming year. And we believe that 37.5 cents is the rate we need to do that. So combined, the rate, proposed rate is $1.41 and 1/2 cents. And that is 6.689 cents higher than the current year rate. We put at your place a sample of the notice that we will publish in the paper. This is prescribed by the state comptroller's office, and it has a number of calculations in it. We actually use some software that we purchased to make the calculation for us. This is a chart we looked at last Thursday night. It simply shows our property values. The May preliminary values that we received were in excess of $23 billion. We know that people will peel their values between May and July when we get the certified values. And so we know that there will be a bit of erosion, is what we refer to it as, between now and July 25th. And so we project, based on history, that we will have a bit of erosion and will wind up with certified values of around $22.6 billion. And that's a 3.9% increase over the current year. And so with that, it would be appropriate for the board to recommend a tax rate in the amount of, as we have proposed, $1.41 and 1/2 cents. And to recommend those rates separately, first the M&amp;O rate and then the debt service rate. And then we will publish that notice in the paper and bring it back for the hearing on June 25th.
President Solans, I move that the board approve a proposed maintenance and operation tax rate of $1.4, $1.04, and a proposed debt service tax rate of 37.5 cents for the 2015 tax year for a total proposed tax rate of $1.41.5.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. We have a motion by Ms. Hudson. Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. A motion by Ms. Hudson, and a second by Ms. Walton. Is there discussion or further questions?
Sure, she said $1.41.5, and it's $1.41 and 1/2. But is it okay for her to say it that way, is my only question?
Yes.
Okay.
Good point of clarification. Any other questions? We have a motion by Ms. Hudson and a second by Ms. Walton. No further questions, please vote. It lit up on the. Thank you. All trustees voting in affirmative. In the first vote, there was, there was an odd light over here. So I wanted to clarify and make sure I understood the vote of each trustee this evening. Thank you very much. So next up on our agenda this evening is the Board of Trustees Handbook as a discussion action item. And this was brought forth by the Governance Committee after extensive review and analysis. And Dr. Rush, would you take it from there?
I would be glad to. I actually don't have a copy of it in front of me. Oh, look at that. Okay. As we previously discussed, there were a couple of changes on really board member communications regarding complaints from citizens as well as from personnel, from employees. And if I can find it here, and I don't know if you have a copy or not. It's page 11 is the citizens addressing, no, that's not it, sorry. There we go, complaint. It's page 13, number seven, numbers seven and eight. And the language that we have in this is the board member may hear the citizen's problem for full understanding of the persons involved, et cetera. That may is a new addition. It was shall hear. And we didn't think that that was necessarily an appropriate thing for us to do for the case of potential grievances, et cetera. It's our choice, it's our autonomy as elected officials to work at our own discretion with the community as well as employees in the district. So we made that change to may with the majority of cases that we would be referring to the proper chain of command and protocol and procedure as has already been set up with the district, seeing that's more, usually the things that we will be discussing with either citizens or employees are going to be operationally related, and that's not our turf. So that's really the most significant change, which is not much. Other than that, everything is about the same. We've maybe tweaked what policies are included, just as far as board policies in the back. The idea and intent behind this is that this will be somewhat of an interactive document online as well, so the public can peruse it just as well as we can. It'll be a little bit more easy to navigate. So we can definitely address specific questions if anybody has any. Otherwise, I am willing to make a motion and move that we accept the revised Board of Trustees Handbook.
Thank you, Dr. Rush.
We can have it come from committee or we can have just an individual. It might be better this time, individual, because we had our transition and our turnover a little bit, so probably cleaner to have an official second on it.
Thank you, Dr. Rush, for the board handbook overview. Ms. Johnson has a copy that we could put on if you want to go through. Right now, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further questions or discussions?
Are we going to have questions or additional comments? Additional comment is that if we could get it sent to the individual board members, that would be great. And then just reinforcing our intent is not to impede dialogue.
Right.
You know, so I just want to make sure that that's very, very clear.
Absolutely.
That in no way are we trying to impede the dialogue, you know, but clearing up just in case of grievance, potential grievance?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Because obviously, our main role is to be the conduit between the community and the district. So we've got to be plugged in so that we can make our best informed decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. I have a motion by Dr. Rush and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Are any further discussion? Please vote. Nope, never mind. Excuse me.
Sorry, real quick. Ms. Solans, I just want to make it very clear. The board handbook is our recommended procedures by the board. It relates to policies where there's official policies items, and it's recommended that we all agree on as seven of how we will operate and fund. But nothing supersedes the state or our policies as elected duties. Just point of clarification that it is recommended procedures, not official policy on many pieces.
Absolutely, Mr. Hogg. These are guidelines, but spelled out clearly so that the public could see and so that we could all share and develop these collaboratively together.
And as a group of seven shows what, how we're trying to operate as a team and as a function together, recommended procedures. And that comes back from early on in my board days when some of these board handbooks I did not agree with. Some of the items, they were trying to limit trustees from doing. And so that's why I just want to make that point of clarification. And so that's why I just want to make that point of clarification.
Again, well said. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Seeing no further lights, please vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative. The board handbook is adopted. We play, please place it on the website at our earliest convenience so that it's available for the public to view and for board member reference as well. Thank you very much. Now we come to our open, open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, we have no cards. Confirming we have no cards this evening for the open forum for non-agenda items. We move on to the superintendent's report.
I do not have a report tonight.
Well, that makes that go fast. Are there board members with reports? Dr. Raj?
I just want to say it was a pleasure to be with everybody here on this dais all weekend long, starting Friday night with our graduations. I don't know our official count. We're probably up around 3,500, 3,600 people that we clap for and walked across that stage onto a bright future that we successfully prepared them for. So it was great, great to see that. That's really the end game, what, what we're doing all this about. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Ms. Mays?
And I just wanted to say congratulations again to our students who will be placed on this wall out here for our induction. And congratulations to the parents whose students were inducted. And like I said at the, the meeting, it's so nice to see the participation in our extracurricular activities because it makes the students so much more well-rounded. So very happy to see those students represent the district so well. So congratulations again.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Ms. Walton?
Well, just to reiterate what Dr. Raj said. As a newbie, six graduations was pretty exciting. It really was. And I'm, it's an uplifting experience and a wonderful one to start this whole adventure and journey on. So thanks again to all of our graduates and especially to all the staff at those high schools that worked so hard to make it just a perfect experience for every single one of those kids and their parents.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Do we have any items to consider?
We do.
I thought so.
Okay, so Mr. Hogg requested that we have a, a review of the Title I budget allocation for the 2014-15 year? Is that correct, Ms.?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then we, the board would like to see the staffing level ratios for the special ed when the comprehensive review comes back. The, there would be, Ms. Walton asked for a breakdown of the special ed per grade level? Or is it campus? Secondary and elementary, okay? And then Ms. Solins asked for a five-year chart for the budget that Ms. Powell said that they would be bringing back. And then finally, Ms. Solins, you captured this in your comments, but to have a copy of the board handbook sent electronically to each one of the board members.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Those are the items that I recall and look forward to those. It is 8:44 o'clock.
Ms. Solins, President Solins, real quick, I think you also requested to have the board handbook. Make sure it's placed on the website.
Posted online, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Sorry about that.
No, no, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Okay, it is 8:44, and this meeting is adjourned.